Efficient on the operation side with the permits, the plan check fees for that operation. The expenditure side that we encounter as our own, with their own city staff is something that coupled with the revenues that come in the net, that's what we're looking at. You know, what's the net revenue after the contract amount? That's our operating revenue for us. So that's what we need to look at. That's what we're addressing basically on the cost allocation plan going forward. I mean, this gives us a good time to just explore those, to explore those assumptions.
But for the budget, when we look at the budget, we're going to see essentially no cost in the building department because except for if we're having to do upgrades to the facility or something like that to stay it us over until we need to. You know, the fee study and the allocation of the management fees such as the attorney's fees, the city manager's fees, administrative assistance, that's a fee study and how we structure our fees. But for a budgeting standpoint, there should essentially be zero dollars in the building department because we have nobody working for us in the building department.
That's not as exact.
It's pretty darn close to, true.
We have staff that is split up. One is the engineer and one is administrative staff.
Well, I think there was a proposal from Interwest that said that they would provide us a fully functional building department. I can pull out the proposal, I still have it at home, I'll bring it to the next meeting. It says specifically what they'll do and what they won't.
Well, that's a component of budget discussions and contract.
We should do that when we get there. But I do think that, you know, there should be roughly no cost in the building department. There might be some cost, but the building, I just want to say the budgeting process and the fee study are two different things. And I don't think that we should be mixing the two when we're looking at the budget because this is kind of a budget projection we're moving forward. We really ought not be doing all this allocation at this point in time. It should be, you know, we're doing silo type of where the costs are, right?
We also have to project where the revenues are coming from, and that's the fee study.
Right. And to come up with a fee study, you have to come up with our costs.
Yeah, well, the fee study is a separate thing. We need to have a meeting on the fee study.
All right, so we've had our discussion. Is there any more that you'd like to present at this time?
No, Madam Mayor, at this time, this is my presentation. The five-year projections, again, this is something that we'll continue to look at with assumptions, provided you have baseline of what we use as assumptions. And this is something that as we, you know, explore and look at our current trends and our current market conditions, we'll adjust accordingly. And we'll continue to bring this back as we enter our budget and once we budget for the next fiscal year, we'll factor that into our five-year projection going forward.
So, thank you very much. Do you have anything else to add, City Manager?
I just wanted to make sure that when you, if you have any questions on this spreadsheet that Robert presented to you in the future, just let us know, we'd be happy to walk through it, we have any more detail.
So at this point, I'd like to receive and file the mid-year budget report for the general fund for fiscal year 2012, 2013. Do I need a motion? Do I have a general consensus?
You might have public input.
You want to ask, is there any public input?
Do we have a, Mr. Cleveland, any public input? Okay.
Yeah, back to you.
So, I think that, thank you very much, and it's a good start with a five-year projection. I think that that's been long overdue. I'd like to move on to item number two, the Marsh Road channel repair discussion. And our Public Works Engineer Director, Gorgis Tevert, is going to present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Council. Now for the really exciting stuff after the mid-year budget, we get to talk about concrete walls. Before you, we'll be reporting presenting shortly on the Marsh Road portion of the Atherton Channel for purposes of repair. So, and the actions we're asking are to conduct the workshops, which will be done by two representatives from Biggs Cardozo, Roy Schnabel, Principal, and Tony Notero. Secondly, to receive and file that report after you get the presentation. Third, during your discussion to consider, they'll have four alternatives, and you'll be asked to consider those alternatives and make a selection because this is what we call kind of a preliminary or 35% study. And then, so the fourth item, once you make a selection on the type of repair work to be done, then to direct staff to get a proposal from Biggs Cardozo, Associate Structural Engineers, in order to complete the project with plans and specifications so that we'll be able to go out to be able to actually make the repairs. So without further ado, I'll turn this over to Tony.
Okay. Well, thank you for having us. Looks like our presentation isn't quite up on the projector yet. Let's try. Let's try. Is this going to be significantly different than what was in the pack? It will kind of summarize what's in the package. It's not a, what you have in the package is taken from the report, we kind of put it in a, there we go. Okay, thank you. In a nicer format. So basically, the agenda, just to give a brief overview of the existing condition, and I'll talk about the four replacement alternatives kind of briefly, maybe focus on the two leading alternatives a little bit more that are under consideration, probably pause at that point, come to kind of a resolution of what we think the leading option should be, and then there's some additional enhancement considerations to be made after that, and then wrap up with the final recommendation. So, why don't we go ahead and go on to the next slide there, Roy? So, in brief, the existing channel was constructed somewhere in the 1940s, 1960s, consists of battered stone and mortar walls with a cast-in-place concrete inver. It's roughly 1,800 feet long. The width varies as you go down the channel. It's tallest at the upstream end near Middlefield Road, and it gets shallower as you move towards Fair Oaks Avenue. You've got the roadway on the west side, Marsh Road, heavily traveled. The existing wall on that side is experiencing more distress than the existing wall. The eastern wall on the opposite side, which is bounded by the residences. And again, upstream and downstream, the whole system is bounded by those existing culverts. The covert at Middlefield Road basically serves as a, controls the amount of water that enters this portion of the system. And hydraulically, the covert at Fair Oaks Avenue is kind of the limiting point on how much water can leave the system. Just to pause, our project is a repair project, not a flood control improvement project, so we, our aim is just to repair structurally the channel, not to make wholesale flood control improvements. We are providing at least this similar capacity to what is there and possibly slightly higher, but that was not the main aim of our work. There was some emergency repairs done in 2007. Roughly 50 feet of the wall was replaced with a soil nail type retaining wall or repair, which is one of the alternatives we're looking at. The channel continues to show signs of distress and cracking, again, most notably on the west wall of the Marsh Road side of the channel, primarily due to the heavy traffic. And there's some existing underlying soil conditions that are contributing to that, including expansive soils and a weak layer underneath the roadway. It's our understanding that construction is anticipated in roughly 2015, 2016. During the interim, we would just recommend that continued inspection and maintenance be maintained on the channel to address any problems as they come up before the complete design is complete and ready to go out for construction. So, looking at your channel replacement options, we were asked to look at primarily three options, a soldier pile wall option, a concrete channel option, and a soil nail wall option. The concrete U-channel option, we have kind of two sub-options that I'll talk about, a cast-in-place and a pre-cast version. So, in a nutshell, option one is a soldier pile wall option, consists of replacing the west wall with a soldier pile wall, which is basically consists of steel soldier piles or steel beams that are drilled and cast into the ground vertically to form your primary support. We'd have a concrete inver channel. And then, the east wall, in lieu of replacing that wall and impacting the existing trees on that side, we're proposing to do just a new concrete lining over the edge of it.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Your steel piling would go in the road area?
Yes, so this is the existing curve right here. And so, the steel piling is indicated right here, it would come just on the inside, it would get cast over, the roadway would still get cast over the top with the primary, this piece is giving the primary support. Then there's a cast-in-place or shotcrete facing that'll define the channel.
Do you take the wall down to put that in there, or do you drive that in?
This gets put in from the roadway. Drill the pier, you drop in soldier piles, cast those in with concrete and lean concrete. Then you come in, you excavate this down, this is already providing the support, and you can then cast your inver, shotcrete in your wall.
Is it a solid cast iron, or?
Soldier piles are typically spaced four, six, or eight feet on center, and the concrete facing will span between those.
Typically during construction, those piles will extend beyond the roadway limit, and they'll utilize that as a barrier for construction as well, so it'll act. They'll typically run the soldier piles up, attach a metal bean garrel to it, or put a temporary barrier, and then they'll cut them down after the wall's constructed.
They like run wild.
Well, they'll extend maybe a level of three feet above the.
And then they get cut down.
And then they'll cut down there. They'll utilize them as a means to prevent cars from falling into the channel during construction.
Good idea.
So, is the diagonal line is coming down, I guess, off of the roadway?
Yeah, this is existing.
Okay, oh, okay, all right.
So, we will gain a little bit of channel capacity by coming in with a vertical wall, which is somewhat offset by casting in a overlay on this side. So this will be a structural wall, it'll just be laid over the top of what's existing out there. That way, we don't have to get into messing with the ice trees.
So, when you take the wall down that's up against, after you do the pier in the road, do you then excavate, you take the existing wall out, and you excavate all the way back to the pier and then rebuild?
Yes, yes, yes. You know, you excavate back to the face of the pier, we'll install metal studs on the face of the pier that'll give you your connectivity to the concrete.
And does anything go horizontal?
Well, you got barreting.
Besides the shotcrete, besides that, is there any additional structure?
No.
So, they're not like bonded together or welded together, there's not a piece of metal that goes across all these piers and you weld them together?
It's all in the concrete facing. So it's a thick structural concrete facing, it's not just a thin pier of.
But then it's just supported every four feet by this steel pier.
But it wouldn't be rebarred or anything like that?
There is rebar in here.
Oh, okay, okay.
Between the soldier piles during the temporary phase, typically the soil arch between the soldier piles, so you don't typically have to put anything within that layer except for, they'll put a layer of hydrophilic membrane so that.
Up for drainage.
For drainage for the back of the wall, to reduce the hydrostatic pressures. But it'll be basically, they'll excavate the soil out, and then they'll come in and put in the rebar, and then shoot the concrete.
Is there any way we could just use great big pipes here? Lay down great big pipes, seems that would be a lot cheaper than anything else.
Not without covering up to the open channel that you have. So that would open up a new environmental issue.
I mean, if we had these great big pipes, we'd just lay them series with each other. Seems like that would be a lot cheaper. It would cover it up, but so what if it takes the water?
Well, the existing channel, again, is the flow that can be taken out of the channels governed by the covert at Fair Oaks. So if you put in something of similar capacity, the overt or pipes theoretically carry that flow through. However, if you cover over the channel, you don't leave an open channel any longer, it changes environmentally what we're able to do. I did mention it in the opening stuff, but because we're just doing a channel repair or replacement in kind, we can qualify for categorical exclusion and exemption under CEQA-NIPA, so we would not have to go through it very detailed.
Yeah. Utilizing pipes or covering this channel would change the hydraulics of the system. It actually works because it kind of floods, so.
Works what?
It works because it overflows, right?
Designed that way.
The current channel.
The current channel does. And I think there's plans to improve it overall, but our goals were not to change the hydraulic nature of this.
I mean, I understand, except it just seems to me that if you bring enough pipes, it would take the water, and it'd be an awful lot cheaper.
We can't close it, I mean, we could put it, we could.
Why can't we close it?
For that same reason. It needs to be open for the water to escape. So if we put in pipes that enclose the water.
Well, if you put in a pipe that's got some sort of escape valve on the top, then the water would come out and roll over. I mean, there are pipes like that.
Yeah, if the pipes fill up, they just, water just comes out. I mean, we're talking about $2 million here.
Three.
Put pipes in there, man, they're live, that's probably $300,000 at most.
You've mentioned, I guess, the covert coming and draining, the covert as it comes to, you know, from Fair Oaks. Where does the covert that runs along Middlefield that comes from the Ensignal School area, where does that go? Does that not feed into this?
I believe that does feed in. Middlefield Road covert at the upstream end also limits how much water actually gets into the system.
But that actually enters in, so the middle part of water actually comes in here, right?
I believe so.
Except for the portion near Ravenswood, I guess it is, there's a small portion that flows.
They've got these drains that are down all along Middlefield, and then there's big drains up by the school, because of course, the school didn't have the requirement to retain all their water, so they're just dumping it into the street, and they have these giant drains that come down there and help fill up our channel. But the water after Fair Oaks goes underground anyway.
Okay. You know, that's a whole nother discussion. I don't want to get sidetracked here. Let's continue on with our presentation about that. Did you want to make a comment?
I just wanted to ask a question related to the steel beams. You had mentioned as you started that this is one of the reasons why we're doing this project, is because of stress from the roadway. Do the steel beams in this design give us more longevity in the channel area if we use the steel beam method? Is not giving the stress on the wall as.
The, I would say, all four alternatives were roughly the same in our rating for durability and maintenance. They are all going to be superior to the existing system that's there. The only variation in the rating that we did on our matrix had to do with the number of construction joints that are required. This type of a system requires fewer construction joints, and the joints are often the area where failures or maintenance has to happen, so they got a slightly higher rating than, say, some of the other ones I'll talk about.
Typically, channel improvements, 50 to 100-year lifespan, so depending on soil conditions and what kind of flows you have, so.
You're saying this is a 50 to 100-year solution?
Typically, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Next one. So, next slide. So here is, we're talking, the next options are the U-channel options. I've broken it into two different options, a cast-in-place alternative and a pre-cast alternative. So the general solution's the same, the construction methods are basically different. So in essence, we would remove the existing channel, and you'd end up with a concrete U-shaped channel. So with two concrete walls and a concrete inver. This is one of the lower, one of the two low-cost options that we ended up getting out of it. And basically, if you look at the picture, what you do is we would come in, instead of putting in permanent soldier piles, like in the previous option, you'd come in with temporary shoring, which could be soldier piles, could be sheet piling. Method it means would be basically left to the contractor within the defined limits of this project and the specifications. So we got temporary shoring, and then like the other one, we would excavate down, you can then cast your inver, cast your structural walls. So the structural reinforcing in the structural walls would come down and tie into the reinforcing in the inverts, and it basically would resist the forces via cannile reaction on the wall. And these would be fully reinforced with reinforcing. We would install drainage behind the wall to reduce hydroshatic stresses on the wall. Again, we did the same concept on this side with the overlay to minimize impacts to the trees on this side. The, once the temporary shoring gets put in place, we feel the majority of the construction will be done from within the creek channel. On the con side, it requires temporary shoring that's not necessarily being taken advantage of in the final solution. And you also have slightly slower construction methods than the pre-cast option. Why don't you go to the next slide?
If I could ask a quick question, because I forgot to ask it on the last one because I noticed it's the same. Where you're connecting to the U-part, the downward, you know, the vertical portions of the U?
Yes.
Okay. You seem to have like a connection joint on both sides.
Yeah, this shows a construction joint, so typically, we cast the inver's slab first, and you'll have reinforcing sticking up, and then the wall gets cast as a second.
Is that a failure point for future, or that needs to be continually mentioned?
It's an area of concern. It's a cold joint, so it's cast solid. One reason I do raise it up off the bottom is so when you have very low flows, it's not constantly wet. So we do raise it up, we typically put a water stop in there to help limit the amount of water that seeps into that joint. We'll often epoxy coat the reinforcing across that joint as well, because that is an area where moisture can get in, so that helps with our longevity of the joints.
And that'll have to occur on the other side as well?
Yes.
Correct. All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor? Do the pre-cast or cast-in-place options to, Councilmember Dobby's point, lend themselves to boxing in the covert at some point in the future better than the other two?
We did look at all options to see that if we could incorporate putting a slab across the top, all four options can be designed to do that. Each option has its pros and cons with it, but they are all feasible to do that if that should be desired. So like this option, option 2B, if you want to switch forward, it's the same basic thing except we're using, the idea was to speed the construction by pre-casting these U elements, bringing them out and dropping them in on the site. So, the major change is because of the pre-casting, it's easier to pre-cast this wall vertical. So, we're actually eating into the road a little bit more to get the same kind of hydraulic section through here. And the other primary concern with this option is lowering this big element. These would be brought out in like eight-foot-long segments, so that you'd stack them next to each other, just like you would a pre-cast covert, is the size of them would take a large crane to bring out. That crane would have to be located in your street, and we got all these trees that lean out up and over the channel so that it would have the most impact to traffic and the most impact to the trees, but the shortest construction duration. Because of the impact to traffic and trees, it kind of fell down in the matrix rating and was not the, one of the top two contenders.
But since you're putting in a base in this, would it not be prudent to increase the capacity by excavating, or would we need to do environmental impact to do an excavation at the same time as we're rebuilding the channel?
Are you saying lowering the bottom of the channel? We have a fixed exit point at the downstream end, so we can't really lower it beyond that point without.
Gosh, you're extending what are the all the.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Okay, and the last alternative is.
What was the item two, neither of them had a price on them?
Oh.
So, 2.1 for the 2A and 2.8 for 2B.
Yeah. One of the other problems with this, because the channel is not uniform height and width all the way down, you end up with a series of specialty segments that drove up the cost as well. So yes, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention the cost. The last one is also one of our low-cost, 2.1 million dollar option. It's a soil nail wall. This is what the emergency repair system was used in 2007. For the emergency repair, they had matched the existing slope since they were only replacing a short segment. For our system, because we wanted to do this overlay, and there was a general concern with maybe getting a little extra capacity, we show a vertical system. We could come back and turn it into a battered system if that is preferred. But basically, this option, the majority of the work would be done from inside the channel, with smaller equipment. You excavate in lifts, so five to six foot of the wall gets removed, and a soil nail gets drilled back into the soil. A piece of threaded rod gets put in there, and then you inject grout into the system, and it creates a bond from that nail to the soil. So the forces of the soil that are trying to push the wall over, you're also anchoring back behind those active forces to also restrain that. So you're able to use a top-down construction method, which is an advantage to staying out of the roadway, and you tend to be able to get slightly thinner structural elements that way. So, we put in the soil nail, we then do a thin shotcrete veneer that ties that layer together, so you have some structural capacity, and then you would excavate down for your next layer. So this initial layer has enough capacity to take the temporary loads. Once the whole system's in place, then you come back with a shotcrete overlay that thickens the wall, maximizes your capacity for the long-term design loads, and we tie it into the same inver and eastern wall system that we had proposed before.
So how big are those nails? What's the length of those nails?
Those will be about 25 feet long for this.
And the diameter?
The diameter, the hole that drilled, it's typically a six-inch diameter hole, and it's usually like about a one-inch diameter rod that gets put in the hole. And they're spaced roughly six feet, five to six feet on the center.
So you would have to actually have a fair amount of equipment in there to drill the holes and put that in, and that would require probably shutting down the road at least for a period of time.
Back up to the other one. These are the actual photos of the equipment used when they did the repair. These are the actual photos of the equipment used when they did the repair that the...
It's all done in channel. It's not done on the road. This is the, this creates, soil nail creates the least impact because the machinery that we would use could fit in the channel and be utilized in the channel.
Well, the channel isn't twenty feet, is it?
They add sections to the drill rod.
Oh, yeah. The drill drills in, then you can screw another segment on and it drills in, yeah.
Okay, so then you have to do some sort of shoring up or connection for the joints of the nail? Or they just push further in because there's something going?
Yeah, they can do a threaded joint on it. Also depends, we do have, yeah, you're right, we don't have a full twenty-five feet. So yeah, they would have a threaded joint in the system as they slide in.
Thank you.
Okay, so why don't we go... So this is kind of a brief summary of just the projected costs. And also some of our anticipated construction durations for comparative purposes. So the column here is the total anticipated construction duration. The column on the right, farthest to the right, is how much time we anticipate they would be in the channel relative to each other. Just in case that was a defining factor.
We don't have that chart in our proposal, do we?
There was something in the fact that had the number of days. Yeah, but one of the things that was questionable is going back, there's only about a hundred and thirty days. If we have a normal rainy period, we have about a hundred and thirty workdays. And most of these were over a hundred and thirty days. And so...
You mean without rain?
Yeah.
Within the...
Yeah, it starts raining in November and it generally rains through. I realize this is kind of an unusual year, but it's going to rain through the end of March, middle of April. And so then you take out holiday times because your dyes were, it says workdays. So I assume your bids was based on workdays and excluded overtime. And so you're right up against, if some of them, we can't do it if we have a normal rainy or we season here.
Yeah, typically, the in-channel work is April to October. So that would be roughly six months worth of timeframe that we have available. Going off the top of my head how many days that is, but...
Yeah, it's about twenty days, twenty workdays in each month.
Okay, I did try to be conservative in the total numbers. We used all of these systems in the past and we're fairly confident that all these systems could be done within that available October timeframe that we're typically allowed in channels.
And if there was an early rain, significant early rain, would it be to the point where you could stop work and we wouldn't be compromised? Or would there be a problem or...
The, well, the contract will have a de-watering system in place, which will typically be collecting the water at the culvert and then routing it through temporary piping to the culvert at the other end. We would tend to move down the channel in systematically. So if there were a significant rainy season, we could winterize it if we had to.
And there are ways to improve this in-construction facet in concrete and things like that. And so we're looking at anticipated workdays in the channel. All of these alternatives will have to be done within the single season. And we'll have to accommodate that within the single season. And when we look at workdays, we'll also look at weekend times because what we're going to try to do is mitigate traffic impacts. So the traffic impacts, we need to get in and out as quickly as possible. And so I think we're going to look at some weekend times to be working in there as well, not just the weekday times. So when you look at a twenty-day work week, well, work schedule, I think when those traffic impacts are occurring, we're probably going to want them to be continuously working through that, through that period of time to get the...
Yeah, I just was going with you because you had workdays. And I brought it, and that's why I did the calculation to thinking, well, you know, of course you can't predict the weather.
Right, right. So they'll have, and typically at the end of the cycle, there's things like cleaning up and grinding down and coloring and things like that that typically happen at the end that are included in the workdays. But the major impact from this will be, you know, there'll be work in the channel to do the tree removal, the tree cutting and tree trimming that can happen during the pre-April timeframe. And then when the traffic, when we close and detour traffic, for all of us, we want to try to get that done as quickly as possible, that work as quickly as possible. So we'll try to compact that as much as we can.
If I could ask one additional question. Noise, so if you were going to work, say, off-shifts to mitigate the traffic, is there a lot of noise associated with...
Most of the construction techniques will be standard equipment noise, except for the driving and the shoring. And then that one will probably require vibratory driving.
I just want to make clear that you're talking about the soil nail process, right? When you're talking about that, right?
When the pile they...
No, there's several alternatives. The two alternatives that we're looking at, advancing...
Is the soil nail?
Soil nail, which is alternative three and alternative two A.
Two A, right.
Which is...
The cast-in-concrete.
The cast-in-place, right. So the first stage in the cast-in-place construction staging is to put in shoring. And shoring, there are different shoring methodologies. And we do that up to the contractor and we can restrict certain things in the specifications, including the ordinance for noise and time, yeah. And so my guess is they're going to put in some type of sheet piling, which is a vibratory. And so we're going to try, if they have to do, the really noisy construction methodologies are the driving methodologies because it's typically impact, yes. Yeah, it's typically impact driving. That methodology is more vibratory, so it's a machine that basically vibrates it in. Still kind of noisy, but it's not as noisy as a pile driving. The other ones are drilled. So there's the noise of the drill, but it's not as noisy as a pile driving.
Honestly, I could not imagine you doing a project like this without...